Good afternoon and welcome to today's budget hearing for Wednesday, November 18th, 2020. Today, we're dealing with the Office of Management and Budget. We are joined by Councilwoman Strasburger. Councilman Bobby Wilson, I apologize, I tried to scroll through to acknowledge everyone that's here. And other members will probably join as the meeting goes forward. With that being said, I want to turn it over to our Budget Director to give a brief overview.
Thank you, Councilman. We're here speaking on the Offices of Management and Budget. The mission of the Office of Management and Budget is to ensure the effective and efficient use of resources in order to sustain the daily quality of services to residents of the city of Pittsburgh. One way I always look at it is the Finance Department collects our revenue, and the Office of Management and Budget is responsible for appropriately spending those revenues. It's organized in several different areas. One of the first courses administration, which helps to handle the entire breadth of the budget, and also does the human resource functions for the Mayor's Office, Bureau of Neighborhood Empowerment, and the Office of Management and Budget. Also, the capital and fleet asset portion, which helps to manage the fleet handles our asset management for all of the assets throughout the city of Pittsburgh, and also serves as our staff for the Equipment Leasing Authority Board. There's also the Community Development Block Grant Program Division, which of course handles the HUD and the many funds that come through from the federal government, such as our Community Development Block Grant, the Home Investment Partnership Program, the Home Grant, the Emergency Shelters Grant, the Housing with Opportunities, Persons with AIDS Grant, as well as other US Department of Housing and Urban Development. And they do that in a manner that allows us to bring these funds into the city in accordance with the rules and regulations of those agencies. OMB is also responsible for operating grants and special revenue, and of course, the procurement of all that we buy and making sure that the day-to-day operations do have the appropriate contracts and vendors in place for us to be able to do our jobs. With that, I'm going to move over to the budget itself. And let's see if I can share a screen here real quick. There it is, I gotta get to it, excuse me for a second. Technology challenging here. Okay, we got it here. That is not it. Well, let me unshare my screen if I can. Oh, it came down here. Is the wrong side, is the Office of Management and Budget on the screen? Or is it a spreadsheet? Can someone tell me?
Yes.
Yes, it's up there.
Okay, the Office of Management and Budget is up there, okay. If you see here, the total budget is $16,628,000 for 2021. That's a decrease of what was anticipated in last year's five-year plan is $740,000. The total full-time positions are 22, that's a reduction of two positions. Reductions in that first six months, as we explained yesterday. There is another budget portion that will have to be after July 1st if we don't receive revenues. In that first six-month reduction, there are two positions missing, and that's going to be the Chief Financial Officer position and this Senior Budget Analyst position, both about $185,000 total for that. Non-salary budgeted items have been reduced by $258,000 for that first six-month portion, as anticipated from the five-year plan. Examples in those cuts include a reduction of $125,000 administrative fees, and that's the line item that pays for League of Cities, Conference of Mayors, and other membership programs. There's also a reduction of $100,000 in fuel. Hopefully, this is because we're becoming more fuel-efficient, as well as maybe a reduction in fuel costs that are going to be anticipated over the next year. Workforce and training and tuition reimbursement has also been reduced by approximately $46,000. You also see in their budget this next line, and that's the anticipated July 1st workforce reductions. And that is if we don't receive that additional revenue, we'll need to to reduce the Office of Management and Budget by approximately $200,000. Based on an average salaries and benefits, that's equal to about four and a half employees. That would need to be reduced. The Office of Management and Budget also has a, and is responsible for too, the implementation of 2021 Community Development Block Grant, as well as the Capital Budget. The Office of Management and Budget itself with BLA also has capital budget items. BLA, which we'll be speaking about after I leave, Kevin speaks here, the Director speaks. Capital Equipment Acquisition, $1.5 million in pay-go funds, that's a decrease over $5 million from the 2021 budget, so significant reduction there. That's not inclusive of various grants the LA may receive or paid for by the General Fund or other trust funds. The Community Development Block Grant Division, which was transferred to OMB in 2018, also continues to be responsible for Community Development Block Administration. There was $60,000 budget, that's $170,000 decrease from the previous year. Community Block Grant Personnel is the same as the prior year at $1.1 million. Neighborhood Economic Development, formerly known as ACBO, is budgeted $500,000, the same as in 2020. The Emergency Solutions Grant is one of the passers that we do through, in conjunction with the county, $1.2 million, that's an increase of $50,000. Housing Opportunity for Persons with AIDS, HOPLA, $1.1 million, an increase of $150,000, and the Urban League Housing Counseling, $100,000, same as the prior years. And just to separate these things out so the public understands, these are monies that were within the Block Grant Funds or other related federal funds, we aren't necessarily in control of how those monies come in. So they're not affecting the General Fund, is what I mean to say. Total budgeted CDBG allocation for 2021 is $13,790,000. That's an increase of what we budgeted last year, but yet a decrease from what was actually received because we also received that additional COVID money, some of which was the other month today as well. Total full-time positions within Community Development Block Grant Division is 11. That's an increase of one planner, as well as a shift of one senior planner to a lower-grade planner. The Office of Management and Budget is also responsible for trust funds and grants. They oversee all of the trust funds and grants for the city. There's a few that are specific to the department, one is the Facilities Trust Fund, current balance is $6,600. The South Side Parking Enhancement District Trust Fund as well, too, is managed by OMB, current balance $231,000, as well as the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy Frick Environmental Center Grant from the Department of Community and Economic Development. There remains $187,000 as of today. So with that, a lot of information, we'll be making sure that the information is posted online and what the members see, the public also will have access to. But with that, I'd like to hand it over to Kevin Paulus. He can introduce the folks he has with him today. We can move on, hopefully, a good discussion on not only what I had talked about for the department, but also for the budget in general in the five-year plan. Kevin?
Thanks, Bill. Good afternoon, Council. Thank you for allowing us to join you today. I am joined by General for Olzinger, the Assistant Director of Procurement, Brandon Walton, Fleet Services Manager, Dave Hutchinson, Assistant Director of CDBG Capital and Asset Management, and Patrick Cornell, the Assistant Director of the Operating Budget and Grants Team. Like Council Budget Director Urbannick mentioned, our department consists of many different teams who are led by the people who joined me today. The efforts and collaboration of those teams on a daily basis, year-to-year, is really nothing short of spectacular. We were able to pivot to remote work very quickly, thanks to the support of Innovation and Performance, our Department of Innovation and Performance back in March. And specifically, I'd like to recognize Tim Osterman and Laurie Loper, who continue to support the entire department administratively on all of our needs daily. Jen and the procurement team for establishing an electronic signature process through DocuSign, which has allowed us to process contracts while working remotely for the past eight, nine months, while also creating a citywide buying plan that helps break down barriers for small businesses to provide services to the city, and of course, all of the other ongoing duties on a daily basis to serve the departments. Brandon and the Fleet Team for the ability to work with the departments to keep our fleet functional each and every day. Our fleet is a challenge to keep functioning and out on the streets. Brandon does a great job of juggling all of that and working with departments. Whitney Finstrom and the CDBG Team for their ability to administer the entire program for the city, especially this year with the addition of the coronavirus aid stimulus funds that we've received, that Council voted on a part of that earlier today. Those have been an influx of funds that have gone into the program, and they've done great to administer that. Dave Hutchinson, the Capital Team, for all of their dedication and hard work on a daily basis with the Capital Budget, as well as ongoing duties. And then Patrick Cornell with the Operating Budget and Grants Teams for their continued work to produce an operating budget document, and the Grants Team to, you know, secure grants for the city to help fill funding gaps when they occur. The budget documents are a very heavy lift in a normal year. However, there were many new challenges that faced us this year for both the Capital and Operating Teams. And some, you know, the hurdles that we faced during the process, we still face moving forward as we continue remote work. Multiple discussions had to occur for us to create both the Operating and Capital Budget Documents, which are five- and six-year plans, respectively. Our office has been working really hard with the Department of Finance to review the constant-changing revenue forecasts, and we will continue to work with them to review updated forecasts and as information has become available that affect our current and future-year finances. I'd also like to specifically thank the Department of Finance, Council Budget Office, and other department directors, as well as the Finance Chair, Councilman Lovell, throughout the entire process for all of their collaboration, specifically for the Council Budget Office and Finance Chair. We had weekly meetings the past month or so to keep the lines of communication open. I feel that those were extremely helpful, and those are meetings that we continue to look forward to throughout the Council Budget process to, you know, help the collaborative effort all around. So at this time, I would like to open it up for any questions.
Thank you. Let the record reflect that we're also joined by Councilman Coghill, as well as Councilwoman Gross. Are there any questions from members? Councilman Wilson?
Yes, thanks, and thanks Director Paulus for, you know, that introduction, and then also thanks to our Budget Team, Bill Urbannick and Michael Strellick. So the major question I have is, when I see this reduction in $5 million for the leasing, what does that mean? Can you, does that mean that, and when would that really take effect? And what services does that affect?
Sure, that reduction is a reduction in the pay-go funding that funds our equipment leasing purchasing plan for 2021. Unfortunately, we had to lower the amount of pay-go because pay-go is money going into the Capital Budget that is essentially an operating budget transfer. So while that amount reduced, we are trying to find other revenue or other sources of funds to go into the Capital Acquisition Plan. Some of the other funds is a transfer from the Operating Budget in Public Safety, as well as Liquid Fuels Trust Fund, and also exploring other grants as they become available to help offset some of those costs. But no doubt, it will affect our acquisition plan for the upcoming year.
Okay, just so clear, this is, like, we're talking about it regardless if we get the funding in June?
No, if we get, if we get a federal stimulus package, or if revenues increase and we reopen the budget, we can always revisit this amount and revise the pay-go amount to higher, depending on the bandwidth at that particular time. But as of now, this is kind of the blueprint of what we're looking at.
Okay, so we have to start out this way?
Yes.
And can you tell me what services will not be cut? That we currently, you know, street sweeping, you know, like, you know, street sweeping is a big thing. Obviously, it's difficult during COVID because everyone's at home, but, you know, I know that we recently went to leasing with that instead of the purchase and maintenance of it.
Yeah, and this is something that will be discussed in the BLA meeting after this, as well as part for their acquisition plan. This plan funds the last payment of the street sweeping lease, purchasing of two ambulances, a couple ES refuse trucks. So we're replenishing or trying to recycle some of the aging fleet that we have. Brandon Walton is also joining me. Brandon, do you want to jump in and speak about this, about the plan?
Yes, thanks, Kevin. So we lost, you know, we'll lose some of the vehicles that we had planned on purchasing, but we did our best to work in making sure that we get some of the essential vehicles that are really in bad shape and really older in the fleet. So we will, we'll look to remount some ambulances as opposed to purchasing them new. That'll save us some money there. We'll also make a change to the spec for the recycling vehicle that we plan to purchase, which will also save some money. And then we'll just, we'll look at the fleet as a whole and see what we can save in terms of keeping in service as opposed to decommission, so.
Okay, so what do we expect, any reduction services?
I only expect to see a reduction in services, so to speak, just a reduction in purchasing of new vehicles for this year.
Yeah, we anticipate that this, this purchasing, depending on the shape of what we are purchasing and what we would swap out, sometimes we do decommission a vehicle if it is in bad shape or dire need. If it is a fleet that could continue down the path of maintaining the staff, this purchase thing would add to the number of vehicles that that department would have. So we do not anticipate any reduction in services.
Then with the absence of being members of, like, we're absent as a member on these groups, like the Southwestern PA Commission, Connect, different League of Cities, Conference of Mayors, like, how does this affect, like, what have we been able to be a part of that we may be missing out on?
So the amounts that you specifically speak to are citywide memberships. We kind of house them in the Office of Management and Budget to pay since they are due to citywide, but other departments do utilize those memberships. So when we take a look, we work with the departments and the administration on what memberships we are going to continue with and what we would not be able to continue with. For the, you know, the Conference of Mayors and the League of Cities, the Mayor's Office is a place, a big part of that. Connect, I think, is DOMI. So specifically of what that department utilizes it for, I would have to follow up with them and get back to you, but typically, in our department, these are all citywide memberships.
Yeah, so for instance, you know, the way we would receive, but the tip funding, I can't remember, is it Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission?
Yes.
Does that, I mean, is that required so that we can continue to have engagement with them on our infrastructure? I mean, is that a specific question for DOMI?
It might, yeah, I think it would be a question for DOMI. It's my understanding it's not required for that.
Okay.
Yeah, we should still be a part of the Federal Highway Program, the Transportation Improvement Program overall, also with PennDOT. But we also do partner with SBC on road audits and specific projects like we did in Shadyside. So I don't know if that changes, that's a good question for DOMI.
Yeah, I was just concerned about, you know, the money must go somewhere to that organization and how they utilize their funds, and so just, you know, just concerned about that. Okay, I might have some other questions, but for now, I'm good, thanks.
Thank you. Questions from other members? Councilman Coghill?
Yes, thank you. And hey, thanks, Kevin, and thanks for being here, and hello to all the team. You know, I just want to really say that any experience that I've had with your team has been really good on my behalf, in particular with Jennifer Olzinger. She really helped Councilwoman Gross and I walk us through, you know, who to hire, what to hire, and, you know, all the different situation that we ran across with the grounded and when we were trying to hire a firm to do that, so she was very helpful. And it sounds like you guys are being responsible and looking at, you know, trying to hold on to some of the older vehicles rather than, you know, buy a whole new fleet this year, probably not a good idea. So, and with that being said, I guess I did have a question. You know, those natural gas garbage trucks that we talked about some time ago, what's the status of those?
Brandon, can you jump in to talk about the CNG ads, whether we've received them or not?
Yes, so we have installed the CNG fueling station. It's been up and running since August. We did receive four new CNG garbage trucks that are just awaiting some decals and license plates, and they'll be in service, we hope, within the next 30 days.
And Brandon, how much were they per piece?
The garbage trucks are around $400,000 each.
And when did we finalize that? Was that before COVID? As far as, we didn't purchase those before COVID, did we?
Yes, we ordered those before COVID. They're about a nine-to-10-month lead, so.
So we're like paid in full for them, I mean?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, so we can't get our money back?
No, sir.
Did you keep the receipts?
I have the receipts.
So, you know, I mean, don't get me wrong, I'm sure they're going to be very useful, and I know, remember talking about it, and, you know, you convinced me of that, but at the time, but then I thought $400,000 apiece, wow. So, so, okay, now I just wanted to inquire about that. Sounds like, you know, you're planning for what's to come, and of course, we don't know if we're going to be getting any, you know, relief or not. I tend to think we will, but certainly, it's not something that we can count on. Just a quick couple of questions, how many people in the department? And I'm sorry if I missed this from being late. I think our Budget Director, you know, goes over these numbers for us. But, but how many people in the department as a whole, Kevin?
We have about 22 that are part of the General Fund with the addition of about 10 for the CDBG.
22, so like 32 in the department. What is the, what is the cuts that the mayor's asking you to make as far as percentage-wise? I don't have that sheet in front of me, but.
It would be, it would be the approximate value of about four positions.
The four positions, okay, so your cuts would be in the way of positions?
Yes, as of now, yeah. I mean, the way we approached the cuts was, were to go through our budget software, understand where every department was with personnel benefits, longevity, uniforms, and all that stuff, to come up with an average salary, and then work backwards from there to kind of quantify a number of what that cut dollar amount would represent, and that represents about four positions for OMB, yes.
Gotcha, so you're committed to that, I mean, you're going to proceed with that?
If no federal aid comes by July 1st, and we're still in this same situation?
Yeah, you're in the wait-and-see plan with us then, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, everybody's kind of, and that's been honestly the hardest part and the biggest challenge is, you know, different information is available, sometimes daily, definitely weekly, certainly monthly. And so it really has been a moving target, and that's why I wanted to specifically mention the Department of Finance when I opened, because our departments work very closely together. And so when they have been doing their five-year financial forecasts, we've been meeting with them and Director Anderson, Assistant Director Gula, and Sarah Capes, who's our Revenue Manager, has been doing a fantastic job, would mean within a month or weekly to try to figure out where we are headed. Now, at the beginning of this, if you remember, we thought we would have a larger revenue gap than we are currently presenting in this budget, which is good, but certainly not. We're certainly not in a great situation now and looking forward. So that's something that we're, you know, committed to continuing every week, looking at the financial or the revenue forecast. That's something that me and Council Budget Director Urbannick have discussed as well, because it's likely that the revenue forecast will change from now until the time that you all adopt the budget. So it's just a constantly moving target, and we're just going to have to continue to stay on our toes and wait and see and see how things fold out and unfold.
I'd just like to clarify something with Kevin, just so you can explain that I talked about briefly yesterday. You are also eliminating for that first six months, as all departments are vacant positions that are within the department. So in your case, you're going to lose, you have one position there, CFO, but you're also going to lose a Senior Budget Analyst. And it would be my thinking on this, that if you knew someone, you had someone leaving, you could have utilized that position, hired somebody, and allowed a transition so you would not lose that additional knowledge and such, and you would have someone up and running right away when the other individual left. So one of my points yesterday is a lot of departments with that elimination of all the vacant positions will lose some managerial flexibility. If you could talk about that just for a second?
Yeah, I mean, that's a good point. Throughout the budget process, we took a kind of multiple-phased approach. The first phase was to work with the departments to identify vacant positions and see what we could cut, and then see kind of based on our revenue forecast where we ended up. That obviously wasn't enough, so we kind of moved to what we consider a phase two, which was identifying more vacant positions, again, with departments, and refining the non-personnel expenditures throughout their budget as well to then implement that make up the document of the Mayor's Budget. So Bill's right, like, throughout the budget process, we have eliminated a significant amount of vacant positions, and the amount of cuts that are illustrated in the document come 7-1 will be, you know, a mixture of a couple other vacant positions if they exist by that point, or unfortunately, you know, positions that are filled.
So, so Kevin, the one or two positions that you're losing, does that count towards the four that you are going to have to cut?
That does not. Those two positions have already been removed and are reflected in the document. We would need to cut four more additional ones.
Okay, that's it for me. Good job, I think you're all doing a good job there. I have no complaints about your department, so thanks.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the kind words, we certainly appreciate it.
Thank you. Also, let the record reflect that we have been joined by Councilman Strasburger, and I know I saw Councilman Kraus join at one point as well. Are there questions or comments from other members?
No, thank you.
Councilwoman Strasburger?
Thank you. I really appreciate you all being here today and all the good work that you have done to prepare for this. And I understand that we're all in this together this coming year with anticipated revenue shortfalls. I wanted to zero in on one of the aspects of your 2021 goals, and that is the public engagement around the operating budget. Now, I know that we all had a very limited amount of time to prepare for public engagement around the operating budget this year in 2020, and that was mostly a reactive position that we were in. And I think that we have a great opportunity in 2021, as you state in the budget, to expand on that tremendously. to expand on that tremendously. And I know that our Office of Community Affairs and of the mayor's office and, and many, many others, a whole team of people have improved upon what was formerly kind of just a two-meeting session or three-meeting session, public hearing style around the capital budget. And now I think we have the opportunity to do the same with the operating budget that people, I think the public has, has gained a new appreciation for the importance of. I'm really happy to see that some of your priorities, some of your strategies to, to making sure that the right people, meaning all people, all residents are, you know, as many as possible are engaging in this, even though it can be something that feels very inaccessible to many people. And that you want to work with Office of Community Affairs on this effort, that you want to identify local leaders in each neighborhood to work with, to make sure that your plan for doing this is right and that you are working with, let me just see here, using in-house staff for the creation of things like the annual action plan, hiring a consultant that specializes in outreach. I think that all looks great. I guess I would just say, you know, please also lean on council members, because although we're not necessarily local leader, I mean, we're not, we might not be in touch with every single resident in our district. We, we can be considered, I think, local experts of our, of our, of our districts in a lot of ways. And would be happy to help guide you. And I would also just say that I understand in a time of potential, you know, cuts to the budget that you might not be able to make that hire of the counsel, outside consultant for this purpose. And I think that we do have a lot of internal experts if that is necessary. I saw that the operating budget for this year is already utilizing the Engage PGH platform, and that's great. Let's continue to do that. But we have people who have been, I think, honing their expertise around public engagement, whether that's in city planning, whether that's in DOMI, whether it's consultants for, for those. I know that we can't always just easily piggyback on those consultants, but there's a lot of internal knowledge. I would also say that in the places I've seen the greatest success in public engagement around budgets, it doesn't just start six months before the budget is due. It starts like nine months before. It starts like in, you know, in March or even earlier with visioning and envisioning of what people want to see out of not just their capital projects, but what they want to see out of their budget in general. And I would maybe encourage you to, to explore that option if there's the capacity to do so, to start the engagement really, really early. Maybe even find, like I've seen in Chicago and some other places, local ambassadors for each neighborhood, who can almost, almost serve as a congress and they could, you know, gain the perspective of seeing the needs in, you know, one part of town versus another part of town. And even though that might sound like a capital budget process, like that also reflects in our operating budget. So just a couple of thoughts there. I really appreciate all the work that you do. I'm also encouraged to see that one of your goals includes continuing the work to become a fossil fuel-free and zero-waste city and, and your, your commitment to doing that. So happy to hear, I don't really have a question, I guess, happy to hear any reactions you have to some of my thoughts or ideas or the public engagement.
Sure. And, and thank you for your support, specifically to the consultant that you referenced for outreach. I believe that's part of the goal for the CEDG team, which deals with certain HUD regulations that are, you know, very specific as part of the capital and operating budget outreach. You're right, this year was the first year for the operating budget outreach. It was successful, given the, the time constraints that we had. I believe we had around a hundred participants, had a lot of submissions to Balancing Act, which is also on the Engage PGH platform, and, and had a lot of good questions submitted to us and, and we're going to publish responses to that. But to your point, you're right. It, it does start much earlier than, you know, just the, the couple of months during the budget process, which is why, you know, for years, the capital team has been doing a lot of capital or budget outreach that starts in April. And so as we move forward, you know, the operating team is finding its footing of, you know, what do we think the best way to go about it is? This year we took a more informational approach, because the operating budget is a very large document. We want to be able to make it accessible and readable for all, which is why we have the budget summary in the, in the, in the beginning to try to explain in layman's terms, you know, what, what we all kind of live with on a daily basis. So that's some, something that we are definitely interested and committed to expanding on. And so to know that we have the support of council and certainly yourself, you know, we can reach out for, you know, any ideas. Always open to, you know, improving things to, to tweak things as we kind of have a, a unique opportunity to, to form it in a way that we feel is best for, for everyone involved. Pat Cornell has also joined, joining us. Pat, if you want to hop in and talk about the operating budget engagement specifically?
Yeah, sure. Thanks. Thanks, Director Paulus. This, like Kevin said, this was one of the first, first experiences we really had with operating budget engagement. He and I held a forum in September. You know, there was good feedback from the community members who attended. With the help of the Office of Community Affairs, we did have a survey up on Engage PGH. We received over a thousand responses. You know, it was a mix of, you know, kind of choose, choose your answers and also written response. So I'm still synthesizing all of those responses from our constituents. And I will share that with council, with every office and the council budget office as well. You know, some of this information has been shared with the mayor. And I do look forward to starting an earlier schedule next year. I think it would make a lot of sense to align the operating budgets outreach with, with Dave's programming for the capital budget, you know, potables and pierogies. Working in a virtual, virtual environment is tough, but we're, we're going to make it through. And there's, there's always room for improvement. And I'm really looking forward to, to growing this and making it much more of a community-involved process.
Thank you. And just two quick follow-up questions. One, have you looked at, I mean, I think I know the answer to this, but just wanted to get it out there. Have you looked at best practices from other cities and what has really worked well in other cities? Not that every process or everything that other cities do can be plopped down into Pittsburgh and immediately work, but I'm just curious if you've, if you've done that.
We've done a little bit of research. The survey tool that is used by Austin in Texas was a really good guide as to the kinds of questioning that, that residents would be comfortable answering and have meaningful input. There are a lot of hurdles in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania with what we can and cannot do as a municipality. So it's always tough to look out of state. You know, even looking at what Philadelphia does is different with their status as a first-class city. So, you know, I am still looking for guides. If you have any best practices, I would be happy to, to speak with you about them.
Great, thank you. And then my second question, follow-up question is taking a page out of Councilwoman Gross's book. You know, the, I don't want to discount the power of raw data and the number of people out there who could take raw data without you even having to do anything with it and come up with their own visualization tool to help the public visualize the budget in a really creative way when it's just out there and it's available to the public, whether through the Western PA Data Center or another forum. You know, to the extent possible, that can sometimes be something that is just almost like free labor that people do because they're interested in data and creating accessible ways to, to, for people to engage with it.
Right, thank you. I, I will look into that. I love the data sets that are available on the, I can never get back in Western, the Western PA Regional Data Center. The Engage PGH survey tool does have some, some visualizations, you know, pie charts and percentages built in right off the bat. I would want to just make sure that any sensitive information that we may have asked for is scrubbed before I would share that data. So I'll look into it.
Understood. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Let the record reflect that we were also joined by President Smith. Any other members? Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for the shout out, Councilwoman Strausberger. I have been trying to put out the data for previous budgets. If you all didn't notice it, OMB, I kind of put out the links to the Western Pennsylvania Regional Data Center budget. So none of those have, they've already been scrubbed, as you say. They're basically, Mr. Cornell, the same as the PDFs. Right?
Correct. And those, so I know I've worked with Innovation or Performance to get prior years up. I know there has been a lapse. I believe there was some turnover in the, the IMP contact who's handled it. Those are just our raw data, numbers that do go into our enterprise resource planning system. And absolutely, you know, once we have a chance to brief with this year, I will make sure we get caught up and have those available.
Right. So that's super helpful, right? So the spreadsheets, if, if the public wants to look, you can find the Western Pennsylvania Regional Data Center yourself. I've put it on my social media with a link. So up through 2018, you can download yourself. When we say raw data, we mean like an active spreadsheet, like Excel compatible format. So you could load it up on your own computer at home and do your own addition and subtraction if you're comfortable in spreadsheets. Whereas when you're looking at the PDFs, you've got to scratch it out on a piece of paper yourself and try to figure out the addition and subtraction. What if I reduce this budget by 20% or 30%? Can I not reduce the budgets in other city departments, et cetera? And when it's, it's so much easier to do, again, if you're comfortable in the spreadsheet format. So I want to say that, I also want to say, since you all are here, and thank you again for getting all of the budget material out. And I appreciate this is a very difficult year, especially difficult for all of us making these decisions on how to make up for a revenue shortfall. I think Mr. Urbannick said it yesterday, the revenue shortfall becomes an expenditure problem. We have to figure out how to spend less than we did last year. It's been less than we expected to be able to spend for 2021. I'm disappointed that we went ahead and moved forward with the items that I voted no on with the natural gas station that was 300,000, maybe 400,000, and the purchase of those gas vehicles. That was, it sounds to me like 1.2 million dollars in this budget year. Those are where we're freezing positions in departments and you're not able to fill empty positions. It seems like that was one that we could have, while we all hate the current environmental services garbage trucks. And we know that they're polluting and, and low mileage. It was an expenditure that we didn't really have to do this year. That we're, we're all kind of looking through it. And every one and a half million here and one and a half million there adds up to our budget shortfall out of a budget that's about a thousand budget lines, even in the format we release it at, right? So I'm sure it breaks down into even smaller detail in your enterprise system, but in the PDFs that we have and the spreadsheets that we can see publicly, it's nearly a thousand different budget items. So having said that, I want to also ask about another vehicle expenditure, since we're talking about that today, and to also clarify whether or not we have a separate Equipment Leasing Authority session, because last year Equipment Leasing Authority was with authorities. Does anyone know? Maybe we can find that out while I.
The plan was, since we had OMB here who helps to manage the ELA, that we were going to do that immediately following Director Paulus's comments.
Curious, because last year I think Intergovernmental Affairs would have chaired ELA, because it's an authority. So I expected that to be lumped under to the sessions that I chaired at and wasn't expecting it today. But I'll ask questions today and I'll can ask questions another time as well. So since we're doing Equipment Leasing Authority and we're talking about vehicles, I've tried to pull out of last year's 2020 budget and also shared with the public those kinds of items that are police department-related that are not on the page of the 2020 budget that is just police staffing. Right? So we got over 3,000 emails about the 115 million dollars that is our police budget. But my staff and I and the budget office went through and found things under like Equipment Leasing Authority, under OMB, or under law, or under IMP, and found all those numbers and came up with a police expenditures for 2020 budgeted at 178 million out of a 600 million dollar expenditure. So that's nearly, you know, 30% of our budget that was just police department related. You know, not fire, not EMS, not other public safety. And so that's a big, big, big number. And so to try to pick those apart, it looks like in the 2020 budget in ELA, that was again, not easy to find, because it wasn't in the published 2020 budget. Because the ELA, being at the Equipment Leasing Authority, is off-book of the published city operating budget, correct?
The ELA has its own account, correct, because it's, it's their own authority. But the ELA acquisition plan was actually included in the 2020 capital budget with a detailed page of all of the acquisitions, vehicle acquisitions that we plan to make in the source of funding.
Is it in the 2021 budget? Because it's hard for me to do this. Everyone relates when you're on Zoom and I don't have a hard copy, because we were so frugal this year. We did not even print paper budgets. So we did, there's some other fat expenditures, but we didn't print paper budgets. Okay, so that is in 2020, the ELA was budgeted to spend 2,111,092 dollars on police vehicles. Do you know that those purchases were made?
They were, I believe. Brandon, can you speak to those?
Yes, all of those purchases were, were made. We received 32 police interceptors, 16 police motorcycles.
Say that again, because I'm not so, and can you translate what kind of vehicles those are? Not really a big car person.
No problem. So 32 police interceptors, those are the Ford Explorers, the marked Ford Explorers that you see police patrolling in.
Thirty-two.
Yes.
That sounds like a lot.
So we have 175 patrol vehicles in the fleet and they're heavily used. So 32 is actually not a, not a, an exact number that, that we should be replacing every year. We should be a little higher, but 32 helped out this year. 16.
I only replace cars every 10 years myself. But, so we're, we're replacing them a lot faster than 10 years.
Yes, one thing that, that we have to realize when it comes to police vehicles versus our own personal vehicles, you may get in or out of your vehicle, you know, three to five times a day, whereas with police, we run these vehicles three shifts a day. Police officers get into their, in and out of their vehicles, you know, anywhere from 10 plus times per shift. So the wear on the seats, the wear on the door handles, the running of the engines. If we have 100,000 miles on a vehicle, we actually have over 300,000 miles on it when you include idle time.
So, and again, just for us to kind of do is, you know, this is budgeting, this is a budget hearing, this is what we're here to do. What's the kind of rule of thumb? Chief Schubert was quoted this year in the paper saying we currently have around a thousand officers. I didn't ask before today's hearing what's the exact number on payroll. Maybe you all know, since you're OMB, what's the exact number of officers on payroll? And then, you know, when I started on council, we had probably closer to 800 on payroll. So like, how do we decide how many of these Ford Explorers we need?
So I work pretty closely with fleet, police fleet operations in determining the needs of, of each zone. And we kind of look at the, at the total mileage and usage of, of vehicles, the repair bills, as well as accidents and total vehicles.
Well, that's for replacement, but like the size of the fleet. Is it like we need a vehicle for every four officers or?
I can't, I can't directly speak to.
Because we have done not even, maybe I should let you finish for the whole like police fleet, because I just got confused on the first interceptor for Kevly, right? Are there other kinds of vehicles the police have? So maybe let you finish that first.
Police do have some other vehicles. This year we just purchased the interceptors, which are the SUVs and motorcycles. They, they have, you know, some specialty vehicles that are needed for, you know, SWAT or the modern police.
I saw very fancy unmarked vans, and I think a lot of people want to know about those. Can you tell me about those?
Those are Ford Transit vans. We do have some, some minimal outfit on them. When I say outfit, I mean, you know, police lights, radios, sirens. The police use them for operations. I, I can't speak exactly to what they use them for.
I guess what I'm interested in though, when you mentioned. I guess what I'm interested in though, when you mentioned the fleet for the interceptors is 175. What other, right, so if we had less of a police, smaller police force, we'd have a smaller fleet. What else is in the fleet? Today, or are we only prepared about what was budgeted for the upcoming year?
So I was, I was prepared to talk about the budget for the upcoming year. As for police fleet, I can't, I, I don't have the exact number total. We're somewhere around 300 vehicles. That includes all the specialty items, unmarked police vehicles, marked police vehicles, motorcycles.
Right, right. But you see where I'm getting at, just like with all the, all the departmental budgets, right? If you have fewer positions, you have fewer overhead costs, right? So, you know, in personnel, just for insurance, health insurance, and, you know, unemployment insurance and those kinds of stuff. The rule of thumb is when you have an employee, you add kind of like 30% of their paycheck, right? Their salary for their total budget line. So for them to have a phone or a cell phone or a desk, that's very rough. Excuse me for being amateur. I'm sure you guys have something a lot more refined. But so similarly, I'm trying to understand the overhead costs of the size of our police force. Because it looks to me like 178 million dollars for a police force is more police than we can afford. Right? I'm going to say that. I'm going to kind of emphasize that point. Some people just will disagree, right? I think our own Budget Director presented to us just yesterday saying that any reduction in police might be untenable. And there's, there's going to be lots of opinions about that. And I have said this directly to the Director of Public Safety and the Director and the Chief of Police myself. So I, I think it's part of our budget season discussion that we should talk about, you know, how much police we could afford. And that's what the public is asking us to do and we'll see what kinds of consensus we can build around that number. I'm going to switch topics. So you're off the hook for ELA for now. But one of the things we've talked about for years, and I think I heard the mayor hint a little bit about it in his budget address. When we talk about equity, I have been saying, not at this table, but at the Gender Equity Commission, and maybe I've, I've talked a little bit about it at council, is that we should be really analyzing all of our budget lines for equity. So one of the kind of famous titles of a, of a policy article is, you know, our snowplow sexist, which is a provocative title. You immediately go like, what are you talking about, right? But if we're spending, I don't know, let's just say an easy number like a million dollars. I'm sure it's more than that to plow our streets, right? Let's say there's a city budget somewhere and they spend a million dollars to plow the streets. If all of the women in that hypothetical city don't own cars or don't ever travel on, in the roadway, then it, that is dollars that are only serving the men of the city. Or if only the wealthy people use the roads and all of the people with less financial advantage use the sidewalks, why aren't we plowing the sidewalks? Right? And it really struck home to me when I saw a historical photo of the City of Pittsburgh's DPW Department that one of these great history blogs or Twitter feeds posted. It was an adorable photo. I think I probably said this at last year's budget hearing. It was an adorable photo of a wagon cart and it had a clear sign on it, City of Pittsburgh, Department of Public Works. And it had probably five employees in winter gear in the snow with shovels. And that was, that was, you know, they were clearing the snow. And I kept, and it's a sepia, you know, that kind of brown and white photo. It's just a fantastic photo from City Archives or some other source. I don't know if it was a media photo. You know, it's funny, I just kept looking at it. I kept looking at her every couple of minutes. And or, you know, a couple of weeks I kept revisiting it and I finally figured out what was so fascinating about it. They were shoveling the sidewalk. And they were throwing the snow into the road. So that is a completely different city function than we do now. So similarly, the things that we spend money on, even in the operating budget, it is fair, I think, for our citizens and our citizen commissions, like the Women, the Gender Equity Commission, to ask, well, what are the outcomes of this expenditure of us spending money this way? And the things we spend money on in the operating budget, are they equitable? Are they really serving our constituents? And sometimes it's some really out of the box questions, but that's what we're here for. That's the conversation that we're here for, right? And it's okay, I think, to enter, to, to have those discussions about things like our snowplow sexist. And so the Gender Equity Commission is going to be, I think we already approved some of the funding for us to look through, or maybe we're just assessing it there too, to look through some other kinds of open data to see whether or not we have, are serving either neighborhoods or portions of the public or certain categories of our citizens equitably. So I really look forward to that conversation and I just wanted to give you the heads up on that because I think it's, that's, you know, again, part of the budget discussion. I will be probably obviously revisiting these numbers on the Thursday. Today's Wednesday, so that's tomorrow's police budget hearing. So maybe after the session and we can email and maybe we can find some of those numbers that we didn't have in front of us today, even though it's about equipment. We can talk about that tomorrow as well. And I think that's probably all I have for, for you all too. I'm sorry, I'm just kind of scrolling through the handouts that we, we look for. I think, I think I'll, I'll stop there, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your time. Mr. Chair, you're muted, sorry.
Sorry. President Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to thank you all for your work on the budget, including our chairperson. I think that it's interesting to see that District Two was number one in the budget this past year. And I think that this, the first year we had Director Paulus and Director Urbani working on the budget both from District Two, so maybe that showed a little bit. But I really want to thank the mayor for his commitment to our side of town as well. And with that said, I, there's a couple of concerns I have. One of the ones I do have is with the CDBG funding. And that process is taking so much longer. I have people that have applied years ago, are just now starting to get that funding or still waiting for funding. And I don't know, it seems like it's, some things have changed there and I'm just not sure what. If you could address any changes or the length of time it's taking now as opposed to what it took, you know, just a few years ago.
Sure, just to clarify, is this in regards to the public service applications from the ULO or unspecified local option?
Yes.
Yeah, we've gotten a lot of inquiries, probably about one a week from the applicants wanting to know if their project got funded. So for this year, the change was that we reviewed all applicants and built that spreadsheet that had a determination if the project application was eligible. In some case, a lot of them were just straight yeses. We have some great nonprofit community partners who've been doing the work for years. We're very comfortable with that. There were some that were a little bit conditional. There's some programming goals that can be difficult for, for somebody who's new, like income verification. And some were just no's. And so we built that spreadsheet, we sent it to the nine council districts and the mayor's office. So far, we've legislated three of the council districts. Thank you for sending those in and the mayor's office.
I have not sent mine in, but I haven't sent mine in because we're trying to figure out who is actually getting funding. Who's not, what the problems are. We're trying to figure out where people are with their process. So I just want to be honest. I mean, it's, it's, I want to make sure that it's worth even going through for our residents because it seems like it's a lot more now than they had been before. Or somebody will say that they were approved and then they have to come back with additional information. Then they give that information, then they want additional information. And, and so it's just taking a long time. And I just want to know what, if there's something we need to do differently, if there's something you change, if something federal government required, you know, if there's, just overall, you don't have to even answer it now. I, I just want you to know that I have an interest and a concern about that, that process. And it seems like it's taking a lot longer. And at the same time, I feel like you've been very helpful and the groups have been very helpful sitting down with our different organizations. So there's been plot, there's been pluses, but there's also this length of time that's a concern.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm interested in talking further.
Okay, thank you. And then I do want to ask, I heard that no longer will we be able to give a conduit. It has to be a direct 501(c)(3). Is that, I want to know where that came from, that requirement.
Yeah, so starting for 2020, we really want to focus our funding on registered 501(c)(3)'s that have their own general liability insurance. That was a policy decision that came from our Department of Law just in terms of the risk that the city's held to if something were to go wrong with the program that we funded. In terms of just good government and what we feel is the responsible thing to do, general liability insurance feels like a safe bar. I, I fully understand that it's, it can be a high hurdle for special organizations that are just starting out. But in almost every scenario where that's a challenge, we've also had other challenges in terms of admin capacity or their, their own ability to get the money out the door. So that's an issue we see a lot, especially with the smaller allocations for $2,500. So we're trying to move towards larger, more impactful allocations. And we're also finding that there's, there's huge gains in the admin capacity of those organizations with the larger awards as well.
So I think that's where the problem is with APO. I mean, APO is intended to help organizations build capacity. But if they don't have capacity, they don't get the funding. So it's a catch 22. I mean, so I think that's an issue. And then now you're saying now these groups have to have capacity, they have to have a fund. It takes a lot to become 501(c)(3) for a group that's just starting out and they don't understand. So I'd like to know that we're going to put something in place to maybe help groups build their capacity so that they can become a 501(c)(3), so they can have their insurance. So you can't address the concerns you'd have, that are legitimate, legitimate concerns. But at the same time, this money is intended to help people that I don't think is necessarily reaching. And, and I think just because somebody has capacity doesn't mean they have heart, doesn't mean they have results. It just means that they got the 501(c)(3) and means that they were able to secure funding in ways that they could build capacity in terms of a staff or whatever. A lot of these groups work on almost nothing with, you know, and put their heart and soul into things and yet can never get any help from the city. And those are exactly some of the groups we really, I think the mayor wants to help, I think we all want to help. I'd like to see us help build capacity. That's, so if we can maybe talk about that.
Yeah, yeah, we've heard that feedback consistently from your office, also from Henry Horn-Piatt with the mayor's office, from Josette Fitzgibbons with the URA. We, we have to shout out Josh Valan and Whitney Finstrom from our team who did a great job running an amended version of the Neighborhood Economic Development Program, the new branding for what's formerly called APO. And one of the things we're finding with the survey results of all the committee members coming out of the program is that maybe we need to have two pools. Maybe we need to have a pool specifically for those smaller organizations that don't have any staff. We're looking at the data for all of the people who applied in terms of what their annual budgets are. And there's huge gaps. There's some organizations that have six or seven staff members, some are all volunteer led. So what can we do to help build capacity for those all volunteer led organizations that they can serve their residents better? We're currently designing some things, anything, any changes we would make to the program would go in front of the, the Neighborhood Economic Development Committee, also be shared with council and the mayor's office before we made any changes. But it's definitely something we're exploring and we'd like to talk to you about it more.
Thank you so much. And then the only other thing I'd like to mention is the citizens' participation in the budget. And I think that, you know, I've heard Councilwoman Strasburger mention, you know, how she'd like to see things grow and expand. And I want to say that this process, this whole budget process was something that I think it was Councilwoman Rudya put in place when she was here. So it's been around for a while. So I mean, I think there's time for us to change some stuff. I think there were some things that we wanted to change and we maybe haven't had an opportunity yet. So I think that it'd be a great time to have a discussion with our Budget Chair and our Director and Director Paulus. I think it'd be great to have that conversation. But I, I do have some concerns with the citizen participation only because I've gone to those meetings and a lot of times, I mean, it's, you're thankful for the people that do show up, but I do know that a lot of times they're, they're not really the people that have a voice in the community. They're not really speaking for anybody other than themselves a lot of times, and that's okay. But we can't assume that they're going to be leading a charge somewhere because some of the people are people that maybe the, the community doesn't want to necessarily speak for them. So I think that's where we elected officials come into play. We were elected to do some of these things. But I would like to see council work with groups of people in their communities and their districts and maybe have a process where we're working with our constituency and hearing different voices and multiple, multiple ideas and suggestions from people that may not ever agree, but yet they can come together and work on the budget like, you know, as we do. I would like to see us come up with some kind of team like that. And with that said, I just want to thank you all again for, for your, for your work on the budget. It's, it's amazing. I think it's going to be a very challenging year. I think that it's been amazing that we haven't had to lay anyone off so far. And I'm, I'm hoping that we get the help from the federal government that we need so that we don't have to face that. But I do want to thank everyone for, for their work. And I will talk about the police budget tomorrow because I have a lot to say about that as well. So I'll, I'll do that tomorrow at a more appropriate time. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Is there, and is there any other member who wants to speak? And if so, you probably just need to chime in. Unfortunately, my laptop died on me, so I had to switch to this, a little tablet and I can't see everybody.
I had a few more questions.
Okay.
But did everyone go? Anyone else can speak up if they? Okay.
But I'll go after you. I just got
Okay, thanks. So this is actually good that I go because I was going to expand on the CDBG a little bit. And I just can't say how much I appreciate the time that CDBG Office has given, you know, my staff and myself the ability to get familiar with, you know, how, how things are run, but also to really help us out in a lot of ways. And, you know, the OMB Office as well. So I appreciate all your time, always responsive. So, and specifically with the CDBG, my, so my concern moving forward, and I expressed this in a meeting earlier, when we, you know, had, you know, for each council office, how there's, you know, a small pot of money that is, you know, smaller compared to a larger part of CDBG money that we spend in the city. And we have people submit and they, you know, we authorize funds for citywide as well. But some of the, you know, when I see the, the line item here for a decrease of 170,000 in the administration, I realize that's not a position, but that was kind of the part that some people had expressed, I don't know if this ties into those funds, but, you know, just the, the gathering of, of or the submission process could be more fluid. And I think on your end as well, it probably can be more fluid where, you know, the particular form or whatever can be created online instead of uploading, you know, numerous amounts of documents. I know I'm talking in the specifics, but basically, you know, to have something end up in a cell so that you all can do your job better and faster is what's needed. And so, you know, I know that there's, you know, we have to cut across the board here, but I just know that even if we're going to start cutting one or two positions, it's still time that, you know, people on the ground, you know, are, are faced with in the office where they have to, you know, there's so many applications out there and we tried our best to, you know, maybe not allocate, you know, instead of allocating, you know, 10 organizations that we may have in the past, maybe only six. So there's less, less of that time spent, you know, here as funds for two years instead of, you know, could you, could this get you through a year and a half or something? So anyway, my, my, my specific question is, does the decrease of 170 within administration, does that, you know, does that completely take us out of the, an option of, of, you know, purchasing software or, or integrating with some other current system that we have that can make the CDBG application process more streamlined?
That shows up as a pretty deep cut. The good news is, it's actually fairly normal for us in the sense that we have to do a five-year consolidated plan every five years. And so you probably saw in the last two budgets, us kind of gearing up, ramping up that funding to be able to pay for the consultants and all the data gathering that we needed to do for the five-year plan. For the next few years, we're just doing annual action plans and those are a lot cheaper to produce. So we're able to dip, dip down in the budget. And then I think again, in 2024, we have another kind of spike whenever we're preparing for the next five-year plan. So that admin line item is really specific to consultants and some of the data work we need to do around the five-year plan. So whenever you see it dip and flatten out and jump back up again, we're just kind of preparing for the next one.
Okay. And are there plans to streamline that process any further?
In terms of the application or the creation of the plans themselves?
The application.
Yeah. Yeah, we're, we're definitely open to changing the applications for our sub-recipient grant programs that were mentioned earlier, public service and the Neighborhood Economic Development Grants. We're, we're finding that some questions are more relevant to other, to, to certain reviewers than other ones are. So it's both kinds of feedback from the people filling out the proposal forms, and then also from the people scoring them. And we're trying to marry those two together to get just the right amount of data where people don't feel like they're filling out a phone book.
And maybe this, maybe this next question is for, is for Whitney. But, you know, I just had to ask, what can we do on our end to, you know, lessen the, you know, make the burden less? I mean, should we be, you know, having the conversation with the organizations of like, look, here, you know, criteria be more, you know, strong with our wording on like what, you know, what's expected in the application? You know, all the, all the Ts and Is crossed that, that the, you know, the census population is, is identified and, you know, the income levels or whatever standard that, you know, has to be met, you know, is in place so that we're not continually, you know, having continuous email threads on, well, if you just submitted something that will qualify, and then we're constantly working to figure out, okay, we know that you do good work. How do we, you know, help this organization either realize that they're never going to qualify? Or, you know, basically what I'm asking is just how can we make, you know, your life easier?
I would just encourage people to add or to, to request to be added to our mailing list for both of those programs. It's community development, sorry, community dot development at Pittsburgh PA dot gov. One of the great things about being able to hire Whitney in the past year is that we're now able to do sessions during the application period where a potential organization can come to that session, learn what the program's about, understand the requirements a little bit better, and then ask questions. We, we did have questions at the end specifically about scopes and activities if it was eligible. So that's a great way to learn, or they can just reach out to us with whatever their goals are to see if it's worthwhile for them even to apply. I wouldn't want anybody to waste time. But we, we obviously love having a wide pool of available eligible applicants for council and the mayor to pick from.
Okay. Is Whitney on the line?
Don't believe so.
He is not, no.
Okay. All right, I'll follow up with him. All right, thank you. I have no further questions. Thanks.
Okay, you know, I just wanted to add as Chair of the Department of Public Works, I'm very proud of that, and I take that position very seriously. And when I hear about these sexist plow trucks, I got to tell you, I will be looking into it immediately, and we will nip it in the bud, okay? I just want to let everybody rest assured that this will not be a problem in our department. Thank you. It was a joke.
Thank you. Is there anything else from members? If so, speak up, because again, I can't see all the screens at one time. Okay, if there is not, we do need.
We sort of talked both about the E L A and O M B. If I can just introduce the E L A folks real quick and a quick introduction there, just because they've stayed on the line for a long time here. We lost, I believe, Wendell Hisrich, who is one of our E L A board members. The E L A, of course, does all the purchasing of vehicles and equipment for the city as well as leasing of vehicles. On the board is Councilman Bruce Kraus, myself, Wendell Hisrich, as I mentioned, Jennifer Pershudy, who, former city employee now at the P W S A, and also former city employee Guy Costa. Those are the members that, that helped to make some of those decisions. If you'd like, I can show you the E L A budget. It's going to also show in, in the capital budget as well, too. But I can throw that up on the screen real quick.
Yes, please.
And here's the E L A plan for 2021. If you notice, there is a total of three point two seven eight million dedicated. And that's both in one point five million, as we had talked about, in Pago Funds, which is down significantly from last year from five point six million. You also see one point six nine five million in other funds, and that's from a variety of sources throughout the city, including partially from the operating budget and other, other trust funds and departmental funds that you can find dedicated throughout the budget. So that, that total two point three million dollar reduction, as we touched on, will affect some of the life cycles of the vehicles that we, that we have, whether it is in public safety or public works. The acquisition, part of the acquisition plan that we're looking at here is two E M T ambulances coming from the M S trust funds. Dummy is purchasing an aerial truck from the Liquid Fuels Trust Fund. D P W will continue with another street sweeper lease. Department Environmental Service, the two refuse packers. Department of Environmental Services, again, recycling refuse packer. And the Department of Forestry, a bucket truck. D P W Streets will get four pickup trucks in this budget as we have it now. And of course, the E L A requires some professional services as well, too. And this is regarding some of the changes that we had in the past year of doing appropriate auditing of the E L A. Public safety, there will be twenty police patrol SUVs. These have been hybrids, by the way, we wanted to highlight that so folks understand that we're moving in a different direction and trying to save some money, as well as the purchases of the thirty-two interceptors that were mentioned before. Those are also hybrids, and hopefully, hopefully they'll help to deal with some of our rising fuel costs and also the life cycle of those vehicles, even though we're talking about seats and doors and all that kind of stuff. The engines actually last a little bit longer, and so does the brakes. So some of those operational costs will be a little bit less. Well, public safety, also boat insurance, not my favorite subject, but that's one of the things that will, will be contemplated in the E L A through this budget. And that is it with that. And there we go. So if anyone from the E L A has a comment or, you know, I'll give it back to you, Finance Chair LeVell.
Thank you. Is Councilwoman Gro still with us? Trying to swipe through to see. I know she had questions.
I don't believe so.
Okay. Is there any other member who has questions for E L A? If so, just speak up. I don't hear anyone speaking. I'll simply say thank you. I was going to ask, were we, were we indeed now moving to the hybrid vehicles for our police force? And so it's really good to hear that we are indeed. I appreciate that. Before we potentially end, is there any other member who would like to say something? Okay, hearing nothing. Okay. We do have an announcement. Budget hearings will continue tomorrow, Thursday, November nineteenth, with the Department of Public Safety at ten a.m. and the Department of Permits, Licensing and Inspections at one thirty p.m. And so all those can tune right back. It'll be live streamed again. With that, we need a motion to recess this meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, we are recessed until tomorrow.